Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Tonight is the September 13th, 2018 Town Board Work Session. Would everyone rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, this is a little exciting. We are at the Fire District Headquarters on Route 52. Thank you to the Board of Fire Commissioners for having us here. I thought that would be nice to have a meeting here so we can meet and discuss things that go on in town with our fire commissioners so that our town residents would know who they are and what they do. Just two brief announcements. I like to thank, it's very apropos, we're here, I like to thank all the fire personnel who handled that fire last week in the Hopewell-Hamlet Village. They had a lot of help also. All our fire companies took part in it and also neighboring fire companies helped, the village of Fishkill, Roundabout, New Hackensack, LaGrange, Houstonville, Mobile Life Help, Beekman. On standby was also Glenham and Arlington. So, we thank all of them and thank God nobody in the house was hurt, but we did have three firefighters that were injured. Nothing life-threatening, but our prayers go out to them and their families and hopefully they have a speedy recovery. So, thank you all very much. And I'd also like to thank Lance McMillan. He is the Acting Regional Director of the New York State Department of Transportation. If everybody saw today, the bridge on Route 82 has been repaved after many years and many calls. They finally did it. It is up for, I read in the last Town Board meeting, that we had a letter from the Department of Transportation stating when they will be doing a total replacement of the bridge. I don't remember if that was three years maybe from now, but they did a resurfacing today and the bridge does still look terrible, but the roadway is paved. So, thank you, thank you to him. With that, I'd like to open up with our fire commissioners, our Board of Fire Commissioners, our Chairman Stephen Schultes, the Vice Chair Kevin McNamara, Commissioner Corey Earhart, Commissioner Scott Post, Commissioner William Stewart. Thank you all for having us here. The Board of Fire Commissioners are the governing authority of the Fire District. They are publicly elected officials and are responsible for setting policy, setting the budget, and the daily business and operations of the district. Operations have grown over time to include fire suppression, emergency medical services, hazardous materials mitigation, fire investigation, rescue, and scene support services. The district covers 56 square miles, which is our entire town of East Fishkill, and that includes Interstate 84, Taconic State Parkway, and Hudson Valley Research Park, the Global Foundry's east and west campus. So, they do over 20, answer over 2,400 calls a year, which is very, very impressive, all for a small fee that is on our tax bill for the, our fire, on the fire line, and we are very appreciative to them that they are 100% volunteer and it's really something that we have that and we continue that in our town. With that, I'd like to maybe start off with our Chairman, Mr. Schultes. Maybe you could give a little background on to how the Fire District operates and how does it relate to the town?
Sure. Basically, seeing as I happen to be the oldest one here...
Most experienced, Steve, most experienced.
I've been in the department and the company for 51 years. Basically, we started off, and how I got involved with this was back in the 60s, early 60s, our own house had burned. It was actually '62 in February, and it was on Church Street, which is actually in back of Frankie Suparret. It was a tremendous stop, but back then, it was still volunteer, and you had the phone system. You dialed in the phone that there was a fire and the sirens rang, and that's how it was done. And basically, from that point, my father, my father was a member, and then my brother, which is three years older than myself, he became a member of Hopewells', and then I followed his footsteps. But basically, the town started with Hopewells' being the first in the town, which was back in, you see our old Model T, which is 1921. Stormville came on, it was in the 40s, I think after the war. Basically, they came on as the second one. And then in the 50s, we had Hillside Lake and Wicca Peak come on. Basically, further on down the road, we put two substations up. Wicca Peak did a substation that's over located by 84 on Shenador Road and Townsend Road, and Stormville Substation is on Mountaintop and 52, which that substation is going to be ripped down in another week or so and rebuilt because of the problems. And that brings my attention to, the four companies are privately owned. Basically, your taxpayer money that you put out each year basically goes to us as the Fire District, as the Board of Fire Commissioners handles that. We pay a lease to each department to house our equipment in there. All the equipment, the trucks and the gear and all that stuff is owned by the taxpayers, which we control, but the actual stations are privately owned. Now, they get a lease, but then they, you see letters come around for fundraisers and stuff, and that's to help them operate their costs. Where most of the towns in Dutchess County are owned by the taxpayers, there's very few like us. I think the town of Dover sells a protection district, and I think there's one other one in the county, but all the other ones are owned by the taxpayers. So, this building here and the training center and everything, people that were in my spot 21 years ago actually seen the light, and we were trying to expand because as our district was growing, they know they needed more places to train with. So, they foreseen this property come up, and that's how we started this. There was a five-year and 10-year plans, and basically, the volunteer ship, we, I started off in the Rescue Squad back in the 60s. I worked on that, and there was no where's near the calls that there are now. Same thing with the fire calls. And since 9/11, I can honestly say that was what drove a lot of the people from Westchester and the city, they wanted to get out of there and move up closer, but they wanted to be able to commute. Well, basically, we've, I guess we've become like a Bedrick District, which has been difficult because we serve all these people trying to take, and then we ask for volunteers, and basically what they do is they look at this, and they said, yeah, they volunteer until they see what they got to get involved in, which of course, the involvement is pretty heavy with the training that you have to follow through to become a firefighter or an EMT and stuff. But we look forward to push the volunteer ship and people that retire or before retirement that want to get involved. And a lot of people are willing to start, and they do start, but then they find out, you know, between the kids and the families and stuff, they can't hang on. So, actually, we are having trouble, but this is not just East Fishkill. This is a statewide problem and a nationwide problem.
Nationwide problem, right?
The nationwide problem is just as bad. I think we feel it more because we were a farm town, and basically now we're like a commuting town for New York City and Westchester and everything. So, it affects us more because they're here only for a short period of time and then they're out to work. So, we have to deal with the rest of this stuff. And of course, with progress that has happened with the automatic fire alarms, carbon monoxide detectors and all these things, there's a lot of calls, and a lot of them are false calls. But the first thing, it's like down in the city, if you have a problem, who are you going to call? Seems to be it's always the fire department, no matter what the problem is. Take breaks or whatever, it's, that's who they call. So, the 911 Center picks up, which we, up in Alarm Headquarters, and they turn around and see what the call is, and then basically, then they dispatch, which has been, now, which is great because we have pagers, alert tones, also we have it put over our cell phones. So, our communications is a lot better, plus we don't blow the sirens all the time. There's, basically, if you hear the siren, pretty much it's because of a disaster-type thing that goes on.
Except for 12 o'clock.
Yes, yeah, 12 o'clock, some of the departments still, still blow the sirens, but, so we have a lot of communications that way. But the ambulance squad has diminished somewhat because of the amount of calls we've had. So, therefore, we've had to bring in some paid stuff as far as our ALS units go. We've had to do that and help us on some of our BLSS calls. But basically, hopefully, we are trying to stay away from going into a paid department. Right now, the, our budget runs a little over $3 million, and a lot of that's to do with insurance, plus we have 30-some pieces of equipment. But when the process of, because of our volunteers are, we are losing and stuff, and it's hard to handle, so we've been getting rid of some of our equipment and combining it like a tanker pumper. Instead of having tankers and impumpers, we're trying to combine the stuff to cut back because we can't get all the stuff out. Plus other, our neighboring companies, Fishkill, Roundabout, all these companies next to us, and Hackensack, Beekman, they all help because they have the same problem. So, we go help them. So, but it's, it's a battle. The EMS calls are huge because anybody today that seems to get a cut on a finger, we used to put a Band-Aid on it or go to the hospital and get some stitches, but they call the ambulants. Person has got a toothache, you know, all these things, and it's, it affects us, and we have to answer the calls. So, it does put a burden on our people, and that's 24 hours on. I mean, this is seven days a week. This is not, no holidays, you know, it's, so, but that's what we're up against, and like I say, I've seen this town grow from where it was when Hopewell was fields, and now it's growing more and more and more. And the problem of it is, of course, the people is over, what, 30,000 now?
30,000.
Yeah. So, basically, you know, we were like a farm town, which four or 5,000 people, so this is where it's happened. So, but we have, we've tried to do a tremendous job for our taxpayers to try to keep our costs down, and actually, what you see here, back there and everything, is perfectly owned by you people, but there's no loans on nothing. We have controlled the money enough, we've been able to pay for stuff. It's outright, so we don't have all these floating loans and bond issues and stuff. We've been able to do that. How long we'll be able to do that, I don't know. But right now, like I told you what the budget would be, if we wind up going paid, you could probably look at that triple it, easy. You're probably looking at 12 million, 14 million. And what we would do is that we'd probably wind up putting a paid section here and still use the departments outside with them because there's no way of paid unless you're in New York City can afford everything. But you see with them, they have 150 firefighters, but look at all the equipment they bring because they need the people. So, that's, that's how they get there. But, so, you know, like I say, it's been a struggle, but I'm very proud to serve on this board. I started off as just a firefighter, worked my way up the line. I was district chief for 10 years here, and now I'm serving on the Board of Fire Commissioners to help them with the training and everything else. So, basically, I'll let some of these other guys speak, but that's a little bit about what we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Kevin.
Could, could one of you explain to us, how is, for people who don't know at home, how do the fire departments run with the chain of command compared to the chain of command with the Fire District? Are you intertwined? How does it work? Who's in charge of the departments? I know Commissioner Post, he has good experience here.
Well, basically, the way Chairman Schultes said, the Fire District is the governing board for the entire district, the, the business end. The individual fire companies are privately owned, but as far as their hierarchy, we're kind of like a school board. You have the school board that does the governing, and then you have a superintendent that runs the day-to-day operations. For fire department terms, we have a district chief. He is the all-knowing guy with, that has the halo around him when he walks on the scene, but he is in charge of everything from day to day. After that, there's a First Assistant District Chief, who is his immediate backup and, in his absence. We have a chief over EMS, and he's in charge of EMS operations. We have a chief over fire investigation because that can be a lengthy process, and it could include court time, so we want somebody that's in charge of that. Then when you get down to the individual company levels, you have four separate fire companies in town, Hopewells', Stormville, Wicca Peak, and Hillside Lake. Each one of them has two second lieutenants, a first lieutenant, and their highest ranking officer in that company is a captain, okay? And then there is an assistant chief assigned to each one of those houses. The members nominate them every year, and their nominations come to the board for approval. So, in reality, when you add up all the cars and who's got white hats, you've got, you know, eight chiefs and a staff of like 40 to 50 officers.
And the, the assistant district chief is basically the company chief.
Correct.
So, if you, if you see the car go by, car four or car six, example is the Wicca Peak's, he's their chief, he's an assistant chief to the district. So, that's the hierarchy. It's kind of like a split. He, he's an assistant district chief, but he's the company chief.
And, and what, and if people see all these cars and what these numbers are, four, six, ten, what do they mean?
Well, it goes in numerical order. The boss is car one, the second boss is car two, and then it goes in station order. Hopewell is station one, so that's car three. Stormville is station two, that's car four. Hillside Lake, station three is car five. Wicca Peak being station four is car six, and there is no car seven. Car eight is the assistant chief for EMS.
Of rescue, yeah.
And a lot of that's determined by radio call signs with the county because it, and the CAD system.
Right. It's how they respond on the radio. That's their radio sign also.
Excellent.
So.
Does the board have questions? Comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, first, I'd like to say thank you to all of you, all that you do, you and, and the rest of the fire departments, all, all the volunteers, and clearly what you just said with a $3 million budget and with a paid force would be, like you said, 12 to 14, so you're looking at a $10 million savings right there. So, thank you for that. We do appreciate it, and, and thanks to all the volunteers and our first responders. We're truly blessed. Clearly, the biggest challenge obviously seems to be getting new recruits, new members on the fire department. How are you going about trying to rectify that, to try and bring them in? Has requirements changed? What has changed so much where people are not volunteering as much or staying for as long?
Probably training time and certification time. AJ shaking his head, he knows. It's, it used to be you could throw a coat on, grab a nozzle, and run into a fire. Now, you have firefighter one as an example. It's, how many hours now, is it 120?
Well, the combined classes that you need to get interior certification is over 129 hours.
So, over 120 hours of training before you can be certified to enter a burning building. And, and this is a combination of OSHA, the state regulations, probably has something to do with, and I'll get crucified, but unions pushing because firefighter unions say, hey, they're doing the same thing we are. They have to have the same qualification, true. So, it's worked that way over the years, but it's, it's more geared towards safety. And, and so that's increased, and you have to keep those up every year. So, it's not just a one-shot deal. You have to research, it is quite a bit of time, and training, we train three Mondays out of the month, or training nights, then you might have a company work, work detail. But it's, it's ongoing. It's not just when the calls come in.
Heavy commitment.
EMS, those that have EMTs, you know, they have research that they have to go through on a regular basis, and the EMT course is getting harder and more in-depth all the time. They're always increasing what they have to do. So, a lot of it is once people join and they say, 120 hours? I don't have an extra 120 hours. I thought I just had to come down here on a Monday night.
Of volunteer time.
You know, of volunteer time, you know? Yeah, they'll, they'll pay for my EMT, but after that, my God, I got all this other time to do. So, it, it, it's changed quite a bit over the last, say, 20 years. We've tried to offset that. East Fishkill has what's called a LoSAP program to try and retain membership. We instituted what you might want to call a retirement program so that after so many years of firefighting, if you, you get some sort of retirement benefit after the age of 60. A lot of, most now, I believe, pretty much every, I wouldn't say every, but I'll bet 90% of volunteer companies have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's actually called a length of service award.
Length of service award program. And it's, it came out probably 20 years or longer in some places. It's probably longer than that now, but, and it's an incentive to try and retain firefighters from just bailing after a couple of years. Our biggest program here is we get young kids coming in from a high school, then they get out, they start college. Soon as they hit college, when they get out, they're, they're looking for a job. If it's not here, they go where it is. We lose them right away. Or others that want to stay can't afford to buy a home here, so they go somewhere further north or south, things along those lines. So, that's, that's, but that, the same exact problem happens in towns like ours all across the nation. It, it's literally every meeting we go to, every big organizational meeting we, we sit in on, or conference we go to, it's the number one topic. How do we retain? How do we get them in? How do we keep them? It's ongoing, so.
To answer the second part of your question, as far as recruitment is concerned...
Oh, yeah.
We, we've done signs, Facebook ads, videos, commercials, you name it. We've done flyers. We've pretty much done just about everything we could or can do to try and get the message out there that we're an all-volunteer agency and we need help. I don't know what else we can do besides grab people by the neck and bring them down to the firehouse.
There's a couple new ones coming down from the national area, you know, having to do with vets and things like that that we haven't gotten into yet, but that's in the beginning stages, so.
Just to take that a step back, how, about how many volunteers do you guys have, and of that, how many are active?
I want to say there's probably somewhere in the area of 250.
240. Go ahead. Two, Julie, can you say it?
248.
248.
248. It depends on, on the activity. I mean, we don't hold everybody to making every call because that would just be too constrictive and we wouldn't have anybody. So, you know, add the activity, I want, it's hard to gauge people's activity because you're going to have some that are going to do 200 alarms a year, you're going to have some that do 75, you're going to have some that do 10, but do other things in the department. It's, there's a lot of different areas where people can partake and put towards the mission. So, it's, it's kind of hard to define a person's activity.
Thank you. The other thing that's happened too is the fires have changed tremendously over the years we first came in. So, our equipment has changed to update. So, of course, they put fire on it or EMS, of course, it drives the cost up, but the regular, regular, what I would classify as a structure fire was usually a wood structure building, but now with all the laminates and the vinyl sidings and everything, and they're building the buildings much cheaper through glued products and everything, but this is all problems which creates a hotter fire and burns quicker, and so we have to stay up on this. You have to constantly send volunteers out for this training. I'm sure the paid department sends too because basically, it's not like hitting one of the city buildings down there. It's been standing there 100 years. This one may have been standing here five years, probably within a period of time, that could come down in a half hour. That's how fast these things can burn. So, that was the object that we've been trying to get through to public to try to get sprinkler systems put in their homes and stuff to help out and stuff like this. That's the reason why smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors have turned around, increased to try to save lives. But in that case, what it does is makes a call, so, and you have to answer the call when it goes in, so.
There's a couple of things I wanted to touch on. One of the things we, they hit on before was about fundraising, that the companies are all privately owned, and we pay, we pay a lease to them to store our equipment, and they, then the company members use our equipment to, for their regular activities. The fundraising is a huge part of those private companies being able to sustain themselves because they're only getting rent for the space that we use, but yet they have buildings that are, well, one on the mountain now, if they're tearing down, it's 40 years old. They have to put up a new building. They don't have any other way of making that money. We can't give, we can't provide them the money to build a firehouse because it's not our, it's taxpayer money that we're dealing with. So, since it's privately owned, when you see these letters for fundraising coming through, you should really consider doing what you can to help these people, you know, help our fire, our volunteers in their privately-owned firehouses to keep those structures up because that's what's keeping your prices down. And Commissioner McNamara spoke about the LoSAP program, which is the length of service award program, which was instituted to try to combat the, the loss of the volunteers that were just kind of fading out. And the idea behind the program was that you, effectively, you get a pension from, from the Fire District. You're vested after five, five years?
Five years.
Five years you're vested, but the longer you stay, the longer your pension can be once you reach the age of entitlement, and you can continue to collect time after you reach that, the age of entitlement, and...
But the cost is only 20, it's $20 a year is what you get.
You get, you're credited $20 a year for each year of service. So, it's not a big pension, but it's something that you're, they're, they're trying to help to retain the members that we have, and they, originally, it was to entice people to want to do this as a added income for their retirement, but it's just not cutting it right now, and our hands are really tied, as Commissioner Post said, with getting people to come down and to, once they see what it actually takes to be a volunteer, it's, it's a lot more than what people thought they were getting involved in. So, I just wanted to hit on that.
And the LoSAP maxes out at a certain amount, right?
And it maxes, 40 years of credit at age 60.
So, first of all, I want to commend you gentlemen for the great job that you have been doing through the years, saving lives first of all, and also saving the people in the... the town of East Fishkill a lot of tax dollars. I understand that you guys have really managed this money properly, and it's probably something that is within you, you guys, for the longest time have kind of been born in volunteering for the fire department. So that's, that's a great asset, and we want to thank you for all that you do on a daily basis, saving lives every day. So talking to different volunteers, I understand that there is this need now to recruit. And I know that you gentlemen probably would like to get somebody at a young age because you could get the best out of them. But what about somebody like myself? I know that now with all the requirements, those people that are advanced in age, do they still have to go through? I understand that your hands are tied, but can they offer their volunteerism on a different level in the fire department?
Yes, it depends whatever they're going to, they can still join a fire company, they could be just active in the company and not join the district, that's one area. Let's say you retire as a bookkeeper. Somebody always needs a treasurer or someone at a company level. So that's one area. But let's say you decide you retire at sixty-two, and you decide you'd like to do something to volunteer in the fire department. You could train to do fire police, you could train to do, I believe still at sixty-two, fire investigation.
EMS driver.
EMS driver.
You could do ambulance driving, okay? Things that you wouldn't have to go through because at sixty-two, unless you're in really physically great shape, you're not going to be jumping out the windows and doing interior firefighting. You could become an exterior firefighter, okay? Where you don't have to put the mask on and things like that. If you're in good enough shape, you can still help pull hose and things like that. So, yes, there's still things you can do at that age.
But to touch on that, as Commissioner McNamara just said, with the training at sixty-two years old, if you're an interior firefighter...
I'm using my age, by the way, not yours.
If you're an interior firefighter, you have to do, go through what's called bailout training, which is basically, we have our tower down here, and you're jumping out of a third-floor window with rope and a harness. And you have to jump out of that building several times to prove your proficiency.
Blindly.
And several times to prove your proficiency, and you have to do that, it's not just a one-time deal, you have to continually show that you can do that. And that's all related to a tragic incident down in New York City several years ago, but, you know, when you talk about costs of what it costs to operate the district, each interior firefighter has to have their own bailout system. And they're only good for five years.
What's that?
The bailout pack itself?
We've gotten ten out of those.
Ten. And then it has to be replaced, and they're not cheap. And this is a very, very expensive...
And that was an unfunded mandate, I might think.
Yeah, and the unfunded mandates are just unbelievable that are handed down to us and to you folks too, but it's, and they're just given to us, we have to do it, whether our budget has been set or not, we don't have a choice. And I just, the last thing I wanted to say about the folks here is that we're publicly elected, and a lot of people don't realize that anybody in town, it doesn't matter your affiliation, your party affiliation, you, everybody in town votes for us. It's not just the fire district that votes for us, it's everybody in town. So that's, the election dates are set by the state, it's a state law, we don't set them, but they're, they are publicized, and I'm not exactly sure of the date this year, but...
Second Tuesday after Sunday.
So it's a second, yeah, it's a weird way they do it, but, you know, if people know that we're publicly elected, you should get out and you should vote for the people, because we're running a three-million-plus-dollar budget, so you want to make sure you have the right people that are in there.
You know, one other comment.
May I just answer your, clear your question up a little bit? That, if you have an older gentleman or lady that wants to join the firehouse and become an engine driver, or drive the fire apparatus, or the ambulance, or anything like that, that initial one-hundred-and-twenty-nine hours I was discussing, that's for a full-fledged interior firefighter. If we had somebody in their mid-forties or fifties, recently retired, wanted to join the firehouse, we're more than open to it. That class is in two segments. So the first part is only eighty hours, it's seventy-nine hours, all right? And that basically, I know it sounds only, but you got to remember, when I took it, it was thirty-nine hours, all right, a long time ago, and now it's at one-hundred-and-twenty-nine plus. But it's not, that eighty hours is split over, however the schedule's set up, it could be two, three-hour nights a week, they could do it on weekends, there's a bunch of different ways of working it. But once that's done, and you take, and you train with the company and get certified as a pump operator, which takes some time, but there's nothing saying you have to go inside a burning building. You can be helping on the outside, you could be driving the truck, and there's different avenues of training, it's not all just that one-hundred-and-twenty-nine hours.
Now, one other comment that I would like to make is that, you know, I've discussed in private with the town supervisor, and also with some volunteer firefighters, what can the town board do to make it, and I know that you have your own rules and regulations that have to be applied, but what can the town board do to facilitate, probably recruit, entice people, young people in the community to join the fire, the volunteer fire department? Is there anything that we could partner together that would...
One idea may be summer camp, you know, where you guys have the rec camp over the summer, trying to get, you know, us involved in that a little bit, maybe having a day where we could bring the fire trucks over and maybe get some interest there. You guys deal a lot with youth programs in the rec department, so, you know, we can go to just the school functions when they have them, like the career days, we do that, we have open houses, but you guys are more involved in youth programs through sports and all that. If there's some way we can find where we can instill some emergency service knowledge, maybe we can stir some interest with the kids.
Would it also help somebody that wants to go to college and can't afford it, like have something that would help them through school, but at the same time they have to dedicate?
As of, as of last I knew, the Associate, or New York State Volunteer Firemen's Association got a grant for volunteer firefighters that were going to college. And last I knew, that it would cover them fully, their college bill, if they came back and served their time with their volunteer fire department, or one in their area where they're at school. So I, that was a program for a couple of years, I'm sure it's still going.
It was community college for...
It was a community college? Yeah, it's not private college, it's community or SUNY.
It was community college for two years, then there are a couple other, there are two other programs that have five-hundred-dollar-a-year scholarships for four years, I believe there's one of the program through either...
Association of Fire Chiefs has one.
Association of Fire Chiefs or FASD also.
There are a lot of scholarships out there.
Hudson Valley Fireman for a thousand here and stuff, so I believe, didn't somebody, your family, somebody else's, one from Wicca P just got one last year.
Hussin'.
Hussin', okay, one of the Hussin' kids got a scholarship, I don't remember which one, in the last couple of years for it.
But with the FASD scholarship, you have to study fire science, right?
Yeah.
I don't believe you do.
Well, there's a couple of different ones available. So they're, they are out there in the state, in the state, and so we make as many kids that are active in the fire companies, we make them aware of it right away. But, you know, going out to just the high school that somebody's not involved, you have to be, I believe almost all of them are actively involved firefighters previous to going to college. So that's available there. Billy, you got anything? I only have one other thing, just so that you do know, is the chairman talked about this building. Right now, the total acreage here is twenty-three approximately, is it? About the five districts right here, this building and the others that sit in, we have three, four main buildings. The district headquarters here, what we call the OTF, which is the building on the hill, and then down back, I don't know if you've all seen it, but we have our training tower, and then classrooms, and then some other outbuildings. Our training tower is really state-of-the-art. We ended up building it, we didn't do it, the previous boards put it together, thinking ahead into the future, because it was such a hard time to get the volunteers to go from the southern part of the county all the way up to this facility up in Poughkeepsie. And so we have quite a few neighboring districts that use our facility down back, and we upkeep it to the hilt. We've put in a half-million-dollar fire simulator set up back there, it is state-of-the-art, okay, with certain things that we are still planning on doing. But we have a classroom down back, it's a four-story, well, you consider it five at the roof, but just four, right?
Four.
Four, flat roof that you can jump off. You know, we have roof simulator, we have classrooms, we have other storage facilities down there for other equipment. We have two trailers that have been donated over the years that we put together for training interior firefighters, and we're in the process of working on another building. So it's all on this acreage here.
The other thing with this, when this building was built, this was, we wanted not just the state-of-the-art, but we wanted to be able to teach state classes here. So this is up-to-date, which we have partnered with the county. So we are another facility, and we fall under their insurance policy like they fall under ours. So we hold state classes here. So actually, we help the county out as much as they help us out. So basically, it's been a win-win situation, especially in the last few years, because the southern end gets so busy that there's a lot of classes that are put down here to help out the county out too, so. Plus they're starting to, I think next year in the spring, they're supposed to be starting to redo their Phase Three, which they're putting up another phase of their building. So basically, that's going to help, so, but that's, like I say, there's a lot of money that's involved in that at one time. Now, like the county just found out, that it's going to, they've just set aside for their bond issue, it's like a three-million-dollar bond, to float to try to do this next episode for up there at the county, so it does get costly. So fortunately, our people before that sat in these chairs, they wound up thinking of this ahead, and they did save us a lot of money. That's what the forethought is, to try to think, because every year that goes by, it's not going to be cheaper, it's always going to be more, so.
Twenty-one years ago, these people met at the building right, the old town hall, the original town hall, right next to the police station, which is about a quarter, a third of the size of this room. And that's where the fire district headquarters was. And until they, like the chairman says, had the forethought to look for property and put up a building that was going to serve for a long, long time, and this property certainly will do that.
That's great, I mean, it's tremendous the amount of money that you do save all our taxpayers, and I was just talking with our chief of police the other day, how your scene support services, your fire police, they save us a tremendous amount just on the burden for our police officers, on scene for accidents and fires and everything, it's tremendous, and we really do appreciate all the hard work of all the men and women that do volunteer in our town of East Fishkill. Anybody else would like to make a comment?
I'd just like to commend everybody. I've probably dealt with more of these people over the years than anybody else in this town.
That's right.
I've dealt with them at all levels. They're a great group of people, and the way they used to generate new members was they went out and they had them, because they're all probably two or three generations in this fire department. And just, I'd like to volunteer the video man out there. We'll get together and we'll do a video on the entire facility, and it might help generate some of the people, if we can put it up there, and he'd be happy to do it, I know he loves to give up weekends.
He'll jump off the roof.
He'll jump off the roof. One of you guys can volunteer to do that, that would...
We'll save that for the deputy supervisor.
Mr. Supervisor, I think that you could order one of your board members and do the roof simulator, couldn't you?
The deputy supervisor, I think.
These guys are all over that age group.
He's the most experienced on the board.
But seriously, I'd like to thank you, you guys are always there, including all the departments, the fire police, the rescue, the police, the fire, every one of them, they're always there, they always care, and they are one tight-knit family, no matter which department it happens, they might be four different stations, but they're one family. I'd like to commend you for that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. And thanks for having us here, we love the building, maybe we could do more of this here.
I wish we could have sat in those big chairs, though.
Well, that's what I mean, maybe we can have a meeting here instead of the chairs.
There may be a fee with that.
Thank you commissioners, thank you very much.
Just quickly, if someone wants to get involved, how would they do that? Who should they reach out to?
Go to any fire station on a Monday evening, usually down there between six-thirty and seven. If they're not there, there's normally, they're probably all here, doing some type of training. You can call the fire station, you can call here at headquarters, the number here is two-two-six-one-six-five-two, and our secretary Julie and Kathy would love to answer the phone.
Nine to three.
Nine to three. You can send us a message on our website, which is EFFD39.org, we have a Facebook page you can message, I think, I don't think there's any other way to explain, we got everything.
But, but you do have to join a company, you can't, you join the district through a company, you have to belong to a company within the district in order to be a member of the district, so you do have to go to a company first.
So whichever fire station's in your area that you live, you can join any one of them, but we usually try and keep people close to the one that they live by.
Excellent, thank you guys.
I know that you guys usually march in the parades, just another thought, is it, do you guys usually hang out after the parade and like talk to the youngsters and the family, they get, you know, really to see that you guys are there, are here, and...
Usually we're milling around after a parade, and I believe we got a booth set up for Community Day too, so.
Yep, they're at every Community Day, and they came down to our Think Differently Day at the beach, they came down to see the kids and to talk to, they brought the fire trucks, and it was really nice. And the parents got the kids to get in there and ask questions, and that's important, and that's the whole idea. So thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you to the fire commissioners again, and next on our agenda is, we have our town planner, Michelle Robbins, hi.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us. She's going to be giving us a presentation or a little discussion about, we have some proposed zoning amendments that we're going to be having a public hearing in the October town board meeting, October twenty-fifth it is. And Michelle, you want to start off with what we have some ideas for?
Sure, there's two that I'm going to talk about tonight, and one of them is focused on the economic revitalization of the Hopewell Hamlet and the Route Fifty-two corridor. And specifically, we're trying to generate some reinvestment in the Hopewell Hamlet and the Route Fifty-two corridor, because they both have the infrastructure, the water and the sewer that enables, or will enable, a little bit higher density. And also, it makes sense to put some of the exit, or the bring development into those areas, because we do have the road infrastructure and the other infrastructure there to accommodate it. So the first zoning that we're looking at is titled right now, the Hopewell Hamlet and Route Fifty-two Corridor Revitalization Special Permit. And it would apply to properties located within certain areas along the corridors. Right now, it's proposed to be, in Hopewell, it's proposed to go from Trinkle Lane to Old Farm Road, and in the Fifty-two corridor, right now, it's proposed to be between Lime Kiln Road and the west side of Corporate Park Drive, which is essentially the Wicca P Square Plaza.
So can I expand upon that, Michelle, a little?
Sure.
So when we were thinking about what to do, about how, we always talk about development and revitalization, and how we could bring more business and attract more companies here, and promote growth, jobs, everything, our two main commercial corridors in town is the Route Fifty-two corridor and the Hopewell Hamlet, right in the village. So those are the two that we're going to focus on, and we need to have a variety of uses there. Many times we talk about how can have a different stock of housing, and where is it appropriate? Well, it's appropriate where we have infrastructure, where we have water and sewer. We can't have development without it. Many times, we discuss that with our Economic Revitalization Committee, and we keep coming back to those two corridors. So it is very apropos to have it there, and our thinking was from Trinkle Lane to Old Farm Road, because the town has to grow somewhere, and obviously, everybody knows on the board that we are, right now, the EPA is building... obviously, everybody knows on the board that we are, uh, right now, the EPA is building the water line that's going down Route Eighty-two. And once they are completed with that, they will turn that over to the town of East Fishkill. And when they do, then we can expand that district. And we will, uh, expand that district to some commercial users, so. Uh, I just wanted to add how we thought about the, the, um, the zones and, and what our thinking was, Michelle, thank you.
Right, and I think, just to piggyback on that argument, um, the, the denser you can create development within an area with infrastructure, you save, you save money ultimately, because you can piggyback on the infrastructure that already exists and create a higher density and get more tax revenues for a smaller area of land. So, following through on that, um, what I've done in the zoning is I've created two different columns, and one follows the Hopewell Hamlet and one follows Route Fifty-two, so the, the zoning, the special permit applies to, to both areas, but there's different criteria for each of the areas. Um, and I just took a, um, a quick look at the different types of uses, and I, and I thought about, you know, in the Hopewell Hamlet, it, it's more of a neighborhood scale type of development, the Route Fifty-two corridor um, is a little bit, I would say, it's a little bit more expansive, so the scale of things might be a little larger along Route Fifty-two than it would be in the Hopewell Hamlet. And, um, some of those uses that are allowed reflect that, and some of the the dimensional requirements also that are proposed in the zoning reflect that, um, differentiation. And, um, you know, for instance, on, I didn't fill in any of the numbers here because I wanted to generate some discussion, but I do have some ideas about what, what these, um, thresholds should be. And I'll give you an example, in D, on, um, the commercial sta- established size limits, it's like the Hopewell Hamlet, um, right now, I'm thinking that that a, uh, the gross floor area of a commercial establishment in a, um, Hopewell Hamlet maybe shall not exceed fifteen thousand square feet unless it's a large anchor like an A and P or, or an Acme that comes in. Um, but that would be like along the main frontages of Route Eighty-two where the shopping plazas are, the existing shopping plazas, and the infill would be, maybe you, maybe you would wanna not consider anything more than fifteen thousand square feet. Um, partly because anything larger can generate a lot of traffic and a lot of, um, parking requirements that you might not have there, and you wanna keep the, the development, potentially wanna keep the development more small scale. So, I mean, we can talk about that number, but that's, that's sort of a number that you see traditionally in mixed-use, um, neighborhood scale developments. The Route Fifty-two corridor, I think we could possibly go a bit larger. Um, you know, perhaps there would be interest for some sort of a, a chain restaurant, and that can, they can go up to like thirty thousand to forty-five thousand square feet sometimes, so you you may wanna consider a larger, um, size limit there. Uh, we have a floor-to-height ratio that we're considering, and, and this, um, if, this zoning would essentially allow residential uses on the second floor and potentially the third floor, if the town board so desires to go to a third floor, um, in the Hopewell Hamlet and along the Route Fifty-two corridor, so you could have commercial businesses on the bottom and then residential on top. And this, this floor-to-height ratio would require that the bottom floor be slightly taller than the second and third floor, and that is to create a, a more commercial-looking ground floor and to differentiate between the commercial and the residential above it.
So, can I expand also upon that? So, uh, as we discussed with our economic, uh, committee, how can we revitalize our hamlet? And, uh, a lot of people say that our hamlet isn't attractive, that, uh, you know, some of the buildings need some repair or remodeling, what have you. So, how do we, um, help get these property owners to invest more money into their buildings? Because obviously, that's a difficult situation, so some of them don't have it, uh, things are very costly. So, we were, uh, you know, one of the discussions we'd like to think about to have is, uh, to add another story onto their buildings to allow them to have another, uh, level of, uh, apartments, so they can have more rent, and in turn, that would allow them to have more income, and they, and because of us allowing that, then they would be, have to improve their building. So, we are trying, we're gonna be working with our Business and Economic Development Committee uh, to, uh, come up with a plan on, a master plan, kind of mini-master plan, I should say, for our hamlet, and how it should look, and, and proposals on what we can do to improve that. So, that's one of the discussions that, uh, that we are putting in here, because I think it's important to offer the property owners an incentive to, uh, to improve their building. And, and like the, the planner said, we have lots of concerns with, uh, with walkability and, and parking. Um, so, we don't, you know, we don't necessarily want more traffic in, in town. That's why we will come up with a plan that will make the town more walkable. What I was very, um, it was very interesting to me, I was speaking with the planner this week about, um, she was discussing with Duchess County Planning Department, how our, uh, town, our hamlet of East Fishkill, uh, Hopewell, is considered more, uh, what was it?
Well, uh, it, it's considered more suited to actually becoming a walkable, very functioning community because all of the major uses that you need to function in the society are located within the hamlet, like a lot of the-
Supermarket.
A lot of the downtowns will just have maybe restaurants, they won't have a active grocery store, we actually have two grocery stores. We have a large grocery store, and then we have a specialty grocery store, we have dry cleaners, we have a post office. We can even walk to the municipal, um, government buildings if we need to, we have a library, we have a community center, we have all these things that make it a really vibrant, um, community church school even in our, our downtown, and most communities, um, a lot of those things have moved outside of the actual, um, hamlet center.
Right.
But we, we have an opportunity, um, to create a really vibrant hamlet here, we, we already have one, but we could, to improve our vibrancy of our hamlet and create more of, um, what I would say even more evening, um, get the businesses actually being able to operate into the evenings and getting more people coming into the restaurants and, and utilizing the services that we have here.
So, many people have said, how come our, our hamlet doesn't look more like Fishkill, like the village of Fishkill, where there's restaurants and you can walk, and there's apartments above that? And it does look very nice, and it is very nice. And so, our, our desire is to have something similar, but we offer even more. We have, like the planner said, all these different aspects that make us a more walkable and, uh, better, uh, hamlet to live in, so, uh, thank you, I, I just wanted to add that.
So, a lot of the, the, um, I guess the regulations that are, are proposed in this special permit, um, go to toward making the development that would occur more walkable, more, um, friendly to folks that want to, um, hang out in a commercial district. And, um, the setbacks and the building heights and the requirements for the facades are there to generate pedestrian activity and also to make people, people feel more like they're in a neighborhood, which helps bring people downtown. Um, the off-street parking requirements, um, I'm skipping around a little bit, but the off-street parking requirements I wanna talk about briefly, 'cause this is something that, um, a lot of times with mixed-use development, you have uses that, that are complementary to each other, and they happen off-times, off-peaks. So, you could have a bank that operates during the day and then a restaurant in the same building. But the bank, you, because it's only operating during the day, um, won't require or generate parking needs. So, the restaurant could utilize the parking for the bank. And, um, so one of the things that I'm contemplating in the zoning is saying that for some uses, you may not even need to have, um, a, a parking, or you would have a lesser parking requirement. And, and in some of the zoning, you see in, in this zoning that I've created, we could actually establish a maximum or a minimum s- square feet of, um, area for when you don't need to have even parking. Like, you could say for storefronts of fifteen hundred square feet or less, you don't even need to have a parking requirement, 'cause more than likely, the folks are parked somewhere else in town, and they're walking to run, to do their errands, and they're going into these stores, and they're leaving their car where they originally parked it. Um, and at least that's the hope, that's the intent. Um, that people are gonna get out of their cars and start walking around more to the different businesses. Um, and, you know, some of the other requirements are related to way that the facades look with the window size, and um, you know, I, I would encourage everyone to look at those and let me know how you feel about some of these requirements, and you can get back to me at any time, and I can, um, you know, sort of take a, a straw poll of what people think on some of these numbers. Um, building heights-
Michelle, may I interrupt you?
Sure.
One second. Uh, I know that, uh, you have put not numbers as far as requirements is concerned, that would be very helpful to really, to the discussion, if you actually gave us actual numbers-
Sure.
-to deal with. Um, because, uh, it would really, um, make a difference in understanding the whole project.
Okay.
Rather than, you know, the concept, but without the numbers, it, it makes it a little bit more-
I can tell you what I'm thinking about in, in each of these, is I have numbers in my head that I'm, that I'm considering. Um, and, like, for instance, I'll give you building height. I think that, I'm thinking of, up to three stories within the Hopewell Hamlet. Um, and I'm thinking of incentivizing mixed-use projects, so in other words, in order to encourage the mixed-use in buildings, maybe allowing a slightly higher, um, height within a mixed-use building than you would in a, um, a building that was just a straight-up residential building, for example, or a, or a straight-up commercial building. Um, and I'm thinking, as far as the, as far as not requiring parking, I'm thinking of a storefront about fifteen hundred square feet. If you have a store that's fifteen hundred square feet or less, no parking require, you, you don't have to meet the parking requirements, you can just, that would just be absorbed within the, the hamlet as a whole. Anything more than that would have to follow the typical parking standards.
So, how would that apply, because we have probably, I would say, ninety percent built that corridor over there. Uh, how would, how would we allow the, the owners that are presently there right now to address these changes, this, this mostly apply for future building, not for the present?
Correct.
Because you cannot raise the, the height of a ceiling on an existing place.
Correct.
So, uh, again, uh, numbers are important, so that if we have to talk about existing plazas, and what are we proposing?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that would make a difference again in the discussion, so. Um, that are, I, as I said, there is some buildable space, but it's limited.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think it would help, it would help me to understand how the people that are there now with those plazas, because they're listening to us, and they're paying attention, and if somebody's gonna make the change, okay, so, the cost of the heights and everything else that we're implementing, it's gonna decide whether or not they wanna do it.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, again, that, that would be, I hope that we have another discussion and another presentation by you with real numbers, so that we could really-
Sure. Well, I, I think, I, I think we're definitely thinking three stories, so if anybody has an existing one-story plaza-
Yeah, but I think to manage point, is that the way this would be applied to existing buildings, we know in the hamlet, there are many buildings that are light on tenants, so either the business is empty or they're upstairs-
Right.
-is empty or whatever, so this would allow them to convert-
Right.
-perhaps the upper floor into apartment units.
Correct.
And then if they had a, uh, business use upstairs, perhaps they could move it down, and it would give them a full building.
Right.
So, in that regard, it would assist the current buildings as it.
Correct.
Other buildings, I agree with you, they're not high enough, but-
Correct.
-there may be enough incentives here for someone to structurally change the building to have a second floor.
Mm-hmm.
Which we couldn't do before because there wasn't water and sewer. Now, we've had that in the hamlet.
Right, no, no, in all agreement. The other thing, uh, so before you go on, um, I know that you spoke about higher densities and the creation of more taxes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is this, uh, real, and, uh, uh, I mean, I'm sure that you probably got some of this from other areas that you worked with or researched. Um, by doing this and implementing this, what would you figure it would be the uh, increase in, uh, taxable, uh, income for the town? Percentage-wise, I mean, I don't need the real numbers, but just a ballpark figure.
Well, I, the reach, the research shows, I mean, it, it depends on the density that you allow, right? So, if you allow, um, you know, if you're taking a, a one-acre parcel of land and you only allow a one-story building on it, then you're only gonna get whatever you can fit in that one story, but if you increase that to three stories, then you have all, that, all that extra gross, gross-floor area that you can tax. So, it does depend in part on the density that you choose, but, um, what I've seen in the literature is, um, you know, anywhere from ten to twenty-five percent, in some cases even higher, depending on how, um, you know, what, and also the uses, the types of uses that they allow in. So, it really, it really depends on the zoning and the, the permitted uses and the densities, but I think, I mean, I think at least ten percent we could, we could gain from, you know, increasing and allowing higher densities within the village.
Again, for, for the business owners and the people that they own these buildings in this corridor, uh, to give them an idea, uh, are we talking about, let's say we have three, two dwellings above their existing building?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, those are taxed at what rate, uh, in your estimation?
I don't, I don't-
You have no idea, okay.
Well, I can explain, with taxation of, uh, commercial buildings, it's based on a rent roll, once, once a rent roll is established. So, right now, if you are a property owner of a strip mall and you got four vacant stores, theoretically, when the appraiser goes there, he takes the rent roll and comes up with a value of what the building's worth. So, if you have vacancies in a commercial property, that's where we get the tax certs, and people want reductions in their assessment. The converse of that is true, is when you got, uh, a full building, your rent roll's full, the value to buildings more. So, what this would do is, even though you're adding residential units, it's still gonna be considered a commercial, mixed-use, and for assessment purposes, it will be based on the rent roll, so the entire rent roll. Um, also, I think it's envisioned that these would be, um, mostly one-bedroom type apartments, so you're adding to the tax base without adding a student. So, without a student, it's more beneficial to the community because you're not adding the cost of an education of another child, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think that that's the economic benefit that the whole community derives from this. And additionally, I'm sorry for going on, it will help reduce the cost of the Hopewell Hamlet sewer system. Because, uh, as you increase the number of units and users, that affects everybody in the hamlet, because what, what it's done, and it's, uh, I'll simplify the process, but if you have three hundred users, they have to pay the whole cost. If you can create three hundred and fifty and it doesn't change the operating cost, each share goes down a little bit. So, this will, uh, have a modest increase because residential is small quantities, um, and it will have an effect on helping stabilize the tax base for the hamlet sewer.
So, in other words, um-
And water.
In other words, the town will have to monitor, uh, how many people sleep in those one-bedrooms? I mean, is that, is, because once we establish this, somebody says, you know, there's three people in my family. So, you have a one-bedroom, and the landlord says, you know, go ahead.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, I understand what you're saying, but ideally, that would work, but-
But there are codes to that effect, the state building code says that a bedroom has to have X number of square feet per person. Uh, so obviously, if you have a one-bedroom unit, that determines the occupancy, which is usually two people. Occasionally, somebody might have a friend sleeps on the couch or something, that's, you know, gonna bother, but if it became a persistent issue, obviously, the landlord is held to the standard that their leases are supposed to conform with the laws. So, their lease should say, it's two bed, yeah.
So, for argument's sake, take, um, Hopewell Plaza, what's your plaza you're in, what's the name of the plaza?
Oh, oh, Canizero Plaza.
Canizero's Plaza.
Right.
How many apartments are we thinking could go in above the plaza?
Well, I-
That'd be my question, you know, on the first floor.
I think-
The first floor?
The first, well, the second, the second floor.
Yeah.
That building's probably five hundred feet long, four hundred, five hundred feet long?
But, they'll have to see if engineering-wise, they can do that.
So theoretically, say five.
Theoretically.
Say five. Say five.
So, five apartments total. Well, it depends again, if you're gonna go two-story or three-story, they're also-
Well, but, if you're going just one floor-
Second story.
Just the second floor.
So, you're looking at, say, five or-
You're not looking at-
So, you're looking at like a thousand square foot apartment?
Yeah, you can set that in the zoning.
You're gonna set that in the zoning, the space, you're gonna limit the size, you're gonna limit the bedroom count.
Yeah, so we don't-
And you can also, if you, if you want, we can, we can put additional controls in the zoning that limit the number of apartments that ultimately the Hopewell Hamlet can, can accommodate. So, we could, we could, if we want to, set a number that-
I'm not so much worried about that, but we've also got that other whole parcel of Fifty-two that's gonna open up, how many apartments do we want in there?
Where?
What could be built on Fifty-two, well, because if you're gonna open it up here, then we're gonna open up apartments over there.
On Route Fifty-two.
The Fifty-two corridor is from Lime Kiln Road-
I know where it is.
-to Corporate Park Drive. That's, that's our, that's the limit-
Yeah.
-for this zoning. It's not all of Fifty-two.
That's the area that I heard about a mi- That's the area that I heard about a year ago.
Right, Peter, like you said, the concern of how many apartments, I mean, whatever we decide, I think it will be more beneficial to the, to the property owners to possibly build more, but again, it's up to them.
And also, we have to see what works, parking conditions and other things.
The other thing, Michelle, you mentioned traffic and you mentioned a bank. I mean, parking after hours when the bank is closed. How are we going to address private property? In other words, the church is privately owned and the bank is privately owned? And some of the other properties, I mean.
Well, the current concept these days is, in exchange for not having to build a big massive parking lot, the property owners do reciprocal parking agreements. It's a very common practice now. So what the concept here is, is that if you're going to add an apartment or something, or you're going to expand something, well, if you agree to have a reciprocal parking agreement, that you, your folks can use your neighbor's parking lot, et cetera, kind of make them accessible, then the town allows less part, less number of spaces, which saves you money in building out the parking space. So that's how many communities are addressing, you know, rather than having to see a blacktop for each building and to get the shared rough hour use.
And because that's a big cost of the property to build and, you know.
No, no, I was just asking a question.
Some communities have, have even gone to the point where they hold the easement and they even step up and do some maintenance issues to accommodate the use of the parking lots to kind of help the whole hamlet feeling.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea would be to cut, cut down on traffic by creating less of these small trips. I mean, right now, I typically won't walk across the street. If I have to go between two places, I'll get in my car and drive across because I don't feel comfortable crossing the street during certain times of the day. So, you know, if, if we were able to make the hamlet more walkable and create, you know, a better pedestrian amenities, I think more people would be walking.
So recently, the town has been, some residents have been outspoken about maintaining like the historical value and the small-town feel of Hopewell and other parts of the town. Now, how can we implement these changes and promote growth in the hamlet while protecting that small-town feel?
So I, so you can include, and that I tried to do a little bit of that, but we can add more. We can add design guidelines specifically within here. I think also, we can talk about, you know, if we do a mini master plan, we can talk about actually putting in some sort of design guidelines in that, that specifically state, you know, certain architectural features that you might want in certain locations, or, you know, if there's a particular, you know, some, some towns have, you know, a huge Dutch heritage, so they want to see, you know, certain gamble roofs or whatever, you know, whatever it is. But, you know, we can be as specific or as non-specific. I would encourage allowing flexibility because that encourages investment, but also working with our architectural review board to create something that we want to see.
I think the key word right there is flexibility because I don't want to be too restrictive and almost sound like we're demanding a little bit too much than what, than what the property owner can afford. Because like we've been saying, we're trying to entice and help them out, and in turn, they're helping everybody out in the community, so.
But we can work with them, and, you know, if they come in initially, we can actually work with them, give them some ideas about what we'd like to see and encourage them to do that. And I think most people are really, really receptive to that, if it comes in early on in the project.
Thank you.
So I, I can go ahead and fill in some of the numbers that I would, been thinking about proposing and send it around to everybody, and then you guys can give me any comments you want.
Thank you for all your work on this. This is great.
And then the next, just the next, and this is a lot quicker, is we also have an issue with parcels that have split zoning, which means that it's one parcel that may have two different zoning districts on the actual parcel. And I don't know what year this happened, but there, I know that at some point in our history, we created about two hundred feet back, two hundred and fifty feet back along some of the main corridors on residential parcels. So now they're split between B. Typically, it's B one and, and R, it can be all, I've seen R one and R three. And it creates a problem for anyone trying to develop that lot, in part because I think after that was done, or around the same time that was done, there was also instituted a hundred-foot setback in parcels in certain locations of the town along the state corridors. So you not only, you only have two hundred feet back for business, but then you have a hundred-foot setback. So then you have very little area to work with if you want to put, say, a business use in. So I'm proposing a special permit that will, will hopefully give the split-zone parcels a little more flexibility. And you can do it two ways. One is if you want, if you have a, it's only between a residential and business-owned parcel. So if you have a parcel that is business in the front, residential in the back, and you want to go to, you want to make it all residential, you can do that because you're going to a more restrictive zoning. So typically, the residential zones require a larger setbacks, they're, they're less intensive. So we're saying that in that case, if somebody has a split-zone parcel and they want to make it, you know, all residential, they can do that so they can actually build a house there. Because in some cases, the split zone prevents them from actually having enough land to have a backyard and everything else you would want to have for a home. And then the other thing we're proposing is to allow folks that want to keep it business-owned to, to expand within limits into the residential portion of the lot with certain setbacks. Right now, I'm showing that you would have this, you would have to, if you're going into a residential zone, you would have to take the setbacks from the residential zone, plus an additional fifty feet would be applied to any setback abutting the more restrictive zone. So in other words, you'd have your residential zoning setbacks, and then you'd have to add fifty feet to that wherever your property line abuts that more restrictive zone. And that hopefully would buffer, like if there was a residential use next, next door, that hopefully would, would provide the buffering we would need. But again, that, that's open to discussion, and I'm just throwing, that was a thought that I had just based on thinking about some of the parcels that are split-zoned and what I thought might work.
Again, Michelle, I believe that this is on the last page, that you're referring all this, this changes in setbacks and stuff. Again, we do not have the numbers. I know for somebody that is not in the field, it's hard really to.
Yeah, and this, okay, so, so the, that was a separate zoning, but I'll, I'll share that with you.
No, I don't.
So I will send this around to you, Mandy, with numbers in it for you, okay?
So, yeah, Michelle, then you could implement all the numbers into the, what we're thinking about for gross floor area, density, building height, setbacks, everything. Then we can, we can pass that around. Also, I'm going to be giving this to our Business and Economic Revitalization Committee for their review and their comments, and then we can add that to the, the public hearing in October. So I'm sorry, Michelle, if you have any, any additional comments.
No, and I think, I mean, I think the idea is, is that ultimately, if, if this works well, this, this kind of zoning, it could be potentially applied at a smaller scale to other locations within, within the town as well in the future. You know, and it, obviously, it's, it has to be customized to the location because each of the different commercial districts are different. And so some of them are much more smaller scale and some, you know, can allow larger types of businesses. So we'd have to consider that. But it's something that if it works and it helps generate economic activity, it could potentially be a model for other locations.
And also, so the board knows, we discussed with our Business and Economic Revitalization Committee, the planner has applied for some grants. Would you like to discuss, tell the board the grants that you applied for?
One of the grants I've applied for is called a C-MAT grant, and it's basically a congestion mitigation air quality grant. And we were one of, just a handful of counties that were permitted to apply. They, they look at air quality standards and they determine like which, which counties are allowed to apply for this federal pot of money. And because there were just a handful of counties, we have a better chance of getting the grant funding than we would if it was open to the entire New York State. So we took advantage of that opportunity, and I believe it only happens every three years or something like that, that this grant funding is available. And we applied for some intersection improvements along Route eighty-two to hopefully get rid of the suicide lane and create some better functioning intersections at Trinkle Lane, Unity Plaza, and even beyond. And also, potentially to connect the Hopewell Glen subdivision with the Hopewell hamlet on Route eighty-two through a sort of extender road that takes Governor's Boulevard and extends it through to Unity Plaza, essentially. And it would be a walkable roadway, so there would be sidewalks that would allow folks to, to, you know, traverse from Hopewell Glen and from the rail trail all the way through to Hopewell hamlet.
And how much is the potential for that grant?
So the grant, the, the maximum amount is five million dollars, and we applied for the maximum amount.
Are any of these match, matching rents, matching funds?
Yes, there is a, there is a match requirement of twenty percent. And there is, you know, potentially some funding that we have from the Hopewell Glen subdivision. They were supposed to do some traffic improvements as a result of the subdivision. And because of the fact that we weren't allowed to cross a rail, the rail at a certain location because of the way it was, it's, it's, it's hard to explain, but the original thought for the mitigation, we cannot do. And that was based on Metro North and discussions with DC and other folks. So now we're looking at other ways that we can potentially mitigate some of the traffic, and this would be one of the ways we could do that. So we could potentially apply those funds.
And the other grant that you, that you applied for down the Route fifty-two corridor?
Yeah, so the Route fifty-two corridor, we're looking to hopefully, we're, we're looking to apply for a downtown revitalization initiative grant, which is focused on any areas that you can kind of create a downtown setting in. And in this location, we, one of the things that you have to prove for this grant is that you could generate jobs. And because the Route fifty-two corridor is currently being redeveloped, especially the IBM, former IBM campus on both sides, we can generate a bunch of jobs there, and I think we'd be well-positioned to potentially getting that, that grant. And that would, is a ten-million-dollar grant, and it can be used for anything to, to further the revitalization of, of that corridor.
That would be fantastic if we could get that.
So Nick, just a quick question. The Route eighty-two grant, that coincides with the project with the DOT that we're currently working on?
Well, when we met with the DOT, they advised us to apply for this grant because to get funding for that full project that we discussed at one of our workshops is very difficult. So they told us to apply for the C-MAT grant, and that would help us to fulfill maybe one leg of it. Like the planner said, maybe at the Trinkle Lane and the Unity Plaza and then that bypass road. Currently, Toll Brothers is obligated, how much more are they obligated?
Another five hundred thousand.
Another five hundred thousand toward, they were contributing, they gave how much total?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. Three hundred already has been used for engineering and other fees. So we would want to utilize that five hundred thousand towards the, the share of the, of the grant.
Thank you.
Michelle, I, I just want to go back. I mean, I was just reading that split-zone special permit. Do you mind going over Section D again? And one other thing, in Section E, you actually talk about off-street parking shall meet all setback requirement, which refers to Section D. Do you mind going over that one more time?
Sure, sure. So the off-street parking is if it's in a commercial zone. So if you, for instance, if you take advantage of expanding the business district into the residential zone, then you would still need.
What, what, what specifically are we talking about? We're talking about eighty-two going towards someplace else?
This is any split-zone parcel in the town. So there's a number of places throughout the town where we have these parcels that are split between residential and business zone on one parcel. And they're typically, there's a bunch of them along Route eighty-two, there's a bunch along, in Stormville, and on Long Route fifty-two. I can give you an example, Klaus's Garage, that, that parcel is a split-zone parcel.
On Route fifty-two by Taconic?
Okay.
And essentially, what it means is that in that location, and in many of the locations, we also have a requirement in our zoning that is a hundred-foot setback from the, the edge of a state highway. So it really limits what folks can do on those parcels because they're split between these two zones. So they're, and, and you're not allowed, like if you were, if you were to take the business zone, you can put a business there, but once you hit the residential line, you can expand your business into that line. So it really, it really narrows what they can do on the lot. And so the idea here is to try to allow folks to be able to develop some of these parcels because we've seen in the planning office, a bunch of people coming in with, with these parcels. And they don't know, they don't know what they can do with them, and it's really frustrating for them. And so we're allowing them, this special permit would allow them to either apply a residential use over the entire parcel because they'd be going to the more restrictive zone, so they could determine that, you know what, I'm just going to make it all residential. Or would allow them to take the business zone and expand it under certain conditions, and the conditions are laid out in here. So you would, you would have to still use the residential setbacks along certain property boundaries so that you would, you would keep the buffers from the business use and the residential use. And then the off-street parking would apply to the business. So the businesses would still be required to provide off-street parking per what is required in the code right now. And they would still have to meet setback requirements for that off-street parking. So that, and that would be to keep them away from any residential use that might be near them.
Okay. And one other thing, going back to Route eighty-two and all the proposals that you have more or less given, given us, traffic, okay? Have you put in this plan together, if we do this before we actually address traffic over there, how much of an impact are we going to create to the existing situation that we have there now? I tell you why. Because for the last fifteen years, when I had my little business, we had a problem over there. There was a development that was put together years ago, maybe about fifteen, sixteen years ago. And the road was supposed to be addressed, but the state never did anything. Well, we all suffered the consequences, long line, huge lines. I mean, you could come, you, you would come over there around four o'clock, the lines would be passed. Then Wick High School going down to Claude Branch. That is detrimental to the existing business. A lot of people were out of business over there. And people see that traffic, they say, I'll go someplace else. I don't want to create the same problem in, by doing this. I, I understand that, and I'm all in favor of doing something for the business community. It's got to be done. But we already, I mean, if, like you said, try going in Hopewell on a Saturday morning, you cannot cross the road to park your car and go to the opposite side. It's impossible. So you have to go. So putting all these plans together, how much thought have you given to the existing problem of the traffic on Route eighty-two right now?
Well, part of, part of the, the mixed-use zoning would be to try to get people out of their cars and to, to walk more. That, that's part of it. Now, that won't accomplish everything that we want to accomplish. But I, but every development proposal that would come in would be required to look at the traffic as part of their environmental review. And we would have to be, because it's a state road, we'd have to work with DOT, and they would have to permit it. So ideally, we might hopefully be able to implement some of the traffic improvements that we were just discussing before some of this development would occur. I don't know if that is necessarily going to be the case, but certainly for the Hopewell hamlet, I don't think any of it would be large-scale enough to generate huge traffic impacts. The residential typically is a lot less intense than a commercial development. So, and we, we obviously would have to study the traffic and look at it, and we'd have to address it. And potentially, there'd have to be mitigation as part of it. But I can't really answer that right now because I don't know exactly what would be proposed and what might come down the pike as far as traffic and roadway improvements with the DOT. We will hear, I think we're going to hear about the grant.
Again, my comment, my comment is only a caution, uh, statement. I, I think that traffic is a problem over there, existing right now, the way the situation is. So, uh, I, it's crossing the street. So if you want me to, yes, allow to build, how am I going to cross that street? You know, i- if we can have pedestrian crossing because the state will not allow us, uh, again, I will caution that whatever we do, which is a good intention, we have to really, uh, that, that discussion needs to happen prior to something like this taking place.
It would have to be part of the approval process and it would be, it, it, it would be required to be.
Yes, thank you.
But so you know, a lot of businesses complain about the costs of, of, of road improvements, like, um, an applicant, uh, for example, on a split zone down Route 52. Uh, they wanted to expand and put more business and that'll generate more taxes for the town and more jobs, but we need to make sure that the road is properly addressed and how they're going to mitigate traffic concerns. And one of them was to put a turning lane. Well, that's like $200,000 to put a turning lane. So how are you going to, how are we going to afford to put a turning lane if we want to put up a small building? So these are the things, these are the challenges that we work through. So you can't say in one area that you want to do economic development, then in one area you want to have traffic concerns. We have to somewhere meet in the middle, otherwise nothing's ever going to happen.
I, I understand, Nick, and I'm all, you know, to me, the comment that I made is only a caution. I lived through these changes in my area where I'm now.
I, I, my business is right in the middle path.
I, I understand, uh, there is ways to navigate where you're located. There is a lot of ways. Where I am at, there is one way through.
There's one way in, one way out.
Okay. The fact of the matter that when they crawl, close the, the, the access on a teconic, deviate the traffic in a certain way. So people that they got to go to Poughkeepsie now, they get off on 82 by the teconic, they come down this way, you don't know. I mean-
That's horrible.
There are people that they waited 15, 20 minutes to get out of my parking lot to make a right turn. And, you know, accidents that have been happening over there by, uh, 376 and Lake Walton Road. I mean, I'm approving, uh, I'm approving proof of what I'm talking about. So again, uh-
So hopefully we could get some monies from the, from the, the grant and we could put that bypass road and, you know, we can have some solutions.
I mean, you know, I, I agree with you, there's certain things on Route 52, but then the, the other thing is we need to push the state to come in and sit and talk about these changes. And, uh, yeah, we all have good intention, but my worry is that we, by doing certain changes, we might create more of an, uh, more harm than good. So, you know-
I think a lot of the existing traffic issues on-
Yeah.
-on that, in the Hopewell Hamlet-
Yeah.
-are left turns that can happen pretty much anywhere along the roadway. So there's a lot of things we can do planning wise, like connecting plazas that people don't have to go back out onto the road. And those things can be addressed when people upgrade their plazas. And that is something that I think should happen.
One thing too, that we don't have a lot of those walking lanes to cross Route 376 or 82. I mean, that one on-
Absolutely.
The one over by Wardkill, boy, it took a while to get used to it. But, I mean, I slow down every time to, you know, you're sitting there, you've been driving that road for 30 years, never had to stop there before.
Right.
I mean, you could put walking lanes in with actual signals and that'd probably be the state, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Who'd have put those in?
And in their proposal for the Hamlet, they did show two possible pedestrian crossings, either closer to the circle or in Mid, Mid Island.
And then just to mention, because it is something that's happening, of the Maybrook Trail, which is the, um, connection from the Hopewell Hamlet Depot all the way down to Brewster is going to be happening. And, um, that may also generate some interest in that location for, for recreation. And, um, you know, hopefully we'll put the state's eyes on our road network and, um, you know, we did, we were encouraged by DOT to apply for the grant, so hopefully that, hopefully that means-
They did tell us, they told us, they said, why? Because they know we have troubles in our Hamlet. They know that the suicide lane is, is, uh, difficult to navigate and that, uh, soon it's going to become useless because once the traffic count reaches a certain count, then it's, they close it. They just actually come in, they said, then they will close the, the middle lane. They'll put divider, they'll put, uh, blockade there so nobody can make left turns. So, but the town can't pay the costs, that's why we need the state to help us. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll get the board more information. Also, uh, I'll let you know when we have our Economic and Business Revitalization Committee and how we fare with that. That's going to be, uh, before the public hearing in October sometime. So thank you. And of course, any questions, call the planner. Um, next on our, uh, agenda is discuss videographer duties. So, um, there's been some concerns about the videographer or what, um, job duties he has right now. Um, he does all the, uh, on his video services agreement. He does the, um, he does the, all the taping for the town board, planning board, zoning board, um, everything broadcast for Town Municipal Channel 22, Facebook page, town website. He maintains and operates Channel 22 on behalf of the town, updates information regularly. Uh, editing of any program is permitted to delete, follow obscene language, ba, ba, ba. He tapes broadcasts, uh, for town special events such as informational programming requested by the town, not exceeding four hours a month. And he does the, um, what else does he do? He does the town, um, we do the spotlight on East Fish Gill, which that is, um, another of the programs. And, uh, what, was there any discussion wanting to be had?
I want to know when he has an opportunity to sleep.
He's busy.
I, um, I just want to say that when we awarded a contract to the videographer a few years back, I remember at the time I made a comment that we needed more or less to have really, um, some kind of, uh, um, uh, some kind of, uh, streamline exactly his duties that he's supposed to have. Uh, I've noticed, uh, I spoke to the town supervisor in private and I've asked the question, I said, uh, how does the process work when somebody calls the videographer and says, I want to do this in a community? And very specific, um, there's been times where certain people have done that without the town supervisor or the town board realizing that that's not. Uh, I remember a couple of years ago, I had invited it at the United States Senator to come and speak to the town of East Fish Gill, Senator Jim Buckley, retired senator. And, uh, uh, at the time, I was not allowed to video the event because I had to go and get approval from the town board. Now, I have never been asked by anyone all the time that the videographer has been doing all the events, whether or not, uh, you know, what is my opinion about that? Uh, now there's people that went beyond the camera, they say things that are, I find inappropriate for the community to hear. So I think that since the taxpayers pay for the, for the videographer's salary, I think the board-
Inappropriate like, like meaning what?
Well, I'm not going to go into details specifically. Uh, if you want to do it in a closed session, we could discuss that. But I'm not going to discuss that in public right now. But I find that when somebody gets beyond the camera and says certain things in a certain way, and I person don't even know that that person is doing that, uh, without permission.
Well, the permission, whatever, if somebody wants to do something-
But I was refused to use for this special event, Jim Buckley, Senator, retired Senator of the United States.
But that was done by the prior supervisor, told you, he thought it was a political matter because it was a person that was really political at the time.
Excuse me, Tom, excuse me, Tom.
But that was at the-
I understand, but the, the, the town supervisor does not control the videographer.
No, but that was what happened then. It wasn't the videographer. It was the video, the videographer was not-
I was told, I was told at the time by the town supervisor that I had to go and ask permission to the town board.
Well, what it says here in the-
Right, because he disagreed with you.
What it says here in the, in the duties and responsibilities that we pass as of January 22nd of 15, that special events like holiday shows, community day, sporting events, parks and recreation events should be covered at the discretion of the supervisor and/or the town board.
Correct.
So I, I don't know, you know, what the argument was-
When I asked you if the gentleman that did the, the video recently, you said you didn't even know. Okay, so I didn't even know. So you're the town supervisor, I'm the town board.
Well, if it was a past, if you're talking about, um, anything with sporting or recreation, that has always, that has been done in the past. So we try to do the same events every year, like the, uh, um, the town camp or the fishing derby, those sort of things. They're spelled out in the contract here that he does the recreation events. Um, so I, I wouldn't have to be, uh, asked for that, but as long as if you want to do something or any other board member wants to do something, as long as, in here, it also says that we keep it, uh, municipal in purpose. So as long as it's not political in nature, then every, if you want something to do, then you, you bring forward what you want to do and we set up the time.
Nick, at what point becomes political in nature and, and otherwise? Who's to decide? Who's to decide during a presentation that somebody does that is political or not? If somebody during that presentation makes some retarded comments, does that become political or not? Okay? So the monitoring of this channel, which is paid by the taxpayer, is extremely important.
And the taxpayer, I think, yeah.
So if I'm going to do an event, I have to ask permission. Or if Peter Cassidy wants to do an event, he has to ask permission. But, uh, other people are allowed to just call on the town videographer and says, tonight, I'm going to do this event.
So-
Just because goes under the umbrella. Again, in the past, people from the community have addressed the fact that being on a camera, it's exposing that member, whoever that member might be, that face beyond the camera is important. So certain people have more exposure to the community than others do. And that's another point that has been addressed in the past.
And that was, and that was addressed in the past as far as if you're going to talk about the spotlight on East Fish Gill, come, if there is a, um, say an election year, come May of that year, we don't do any more spotlights on East Fish Gill. So then it's fair for, if there's people who criticize that, now-
It's not criticizing, it's a, it's a matter of, uh-
Okay, then it's not criticized.
It's a matter of using public funds.
Public funds for the betterment of the community. So when you're interviewing a business or you're watching the fishing derby, that's not a betterment for the people who pay for the channel?
Again, there's been certain comments being made during those events.
Well, the whole town board is here, I think it should be discussed.
It seems like there was an issue that happened that the rest of the board is not privy to and I don't, I feel like I can't contribute to this conversation if I don't understand-
We all have one vote here. If you want to discuss anything, it should be spoken to, I guess.
So if there was an issue that happened, I'd like to hear the details about it if we have a conversation.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not, AJ, it's not, again, uh, one issue that happens, okay? The issue is about a face beyond a camera.
But you mentioned that something-
Okay, so let me be very specific. Let me be very specific. You know it and I know it, that, you know, when people watch that face behind that thing, that means that Peter Cassidy is not doing anything, O'Meara is not doing anything, or AJ is not doing anything for the rest of the town.
But then, but aren't-
But you can do whatever you please.
But the thing is, you could attend everything that they're filming. It's usually town events, right? So just because we showed up or someone else showed up to this event and you're not there, then I feel like it's still a town event.
It's not being not there or being there. Uh, this is very specific, addressed by the community in the past. Okay, and the community that made suggestion about who's supposed to use-
Who community? Community meaning who?
Community members.
Like, like a hu, I don't understand, like a resident came?
Whether it's one-
One resident.
How many people are here tonight? We have a 30,000 people in the community. How many people are here tonight?
I understand, but what I'm saying is you got to be a little-
But if that person that sits over here tonight has just as much of a say as that anybody else in the community.
Okay, yes.
So i- if one says it and we should not pay attention, but if a hundred say it, we should pay more attention.
No, but I'm saying if you want to, if you want to fix something, if you want to make it better, then say what we should do or say what it was.
So if I want to do, let's go, let's, let's go to a-
Otherwise, it's not going to be-
Let's go to a real show that I want to do. And I just told the fire department I want to do one. So I want to do a show for the fire department. It's going to take, it's going to take Mike Minor a long time because he's going to have to come back about four different times to do this show because you can't film the show.
We thought of that, yes. We thought, we thought, we thought about this in the past.
Who can run the show? That's all I want to know. Can I run the show? Can you run the show?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so any one of us can run the show?
Yes.
Okay, but that's going to give me more publicity time.
It's something, it's something that, this is what exactly what we're talking about tonight.
Right.
This is exactly what we're talking about.
Okay.
We need a mechanism in place where, yes, not just Nick showing up with, in the video, okay, time after time, but if Peter Cassidy, who's the assistant supervisor wants to do it, or rotate him, or somebody else-
Right, I agree with that. And I agree, and I agree.
That's what I'm saying.
I agree, but, but, but whoever wants to do the show, do your own homework, make your own appointments, call the videographer and everybody else that you have to do that. It takes a lot of time to do this, excuse me. And do it yourself. Don't expect me to do it for you. If you want to have a, a, a video on something in town, then make your own appointments. I'm not here to babysit the board. I'm here to run the town and to show the people what is offered in the town. So if I'm going to call everybody, businesses, uh, different, um, different air recreation events and things, sporting events, then it's on my time. If you want to do it, God bless you, do it, please, because it's only better for the community. But I'm not going to be doing it for you. You have to want to do it. You're going to have to want to do it.
Then, and then just to be open about it a little bit, what I would say- Nick, not, not for nothing, but I, I don't think anybody's asking for you to do it. Actually, we're actually asking, we're actually asking the opposite.
Can you call the fire department for me and set this up?
I've worked on it.
That's a, that's it.
But no, but it-
Kind of to say what he is saying a little bit, what I'm getting out of it a little bit. If you're going to do a show or you, you put it out, let every, let everybody know through Gina or something, or just do a basic email that says, hey, I'm doing-
If you're doing, if you're doing an event-
I'm doing the, think differently.
If you're doing a special event, community, something with the community and it's not political in nature, then God bless you. If it's in political nature, then we should discuss it as a board. How's that? Does that sound fair?
Just let everybody know.
Does that sound fair?
Just let everybody know.
Could use a sidekick and do the baseball games.
He's coming on the community day.
One person. Manny, you should do the baseball games with, with, with Tom. He needs a sidekick.
Or we could do a soccer.
Yeah, that's soccer, yeah. But, uh, again, we need to monitor, there is certain things that took place and I spoke to you in private about it. And again, if we only have a discussion about that, AJ, I know that you-
But I, I think that, I think-
We need to have an executive session because somebody that takes their camera and goes around making certain statements-
I just, I just-
-that it's going to cost the taxpayers money in the future, to me is a problem.
I don't think that costs a taxpayer any money.
I just wish that we could have a-
Talk about that.
You can't say that. We spoke about an executive session before.
Can I use them like Saturday?
Yes.
Okay. You got to ask him, but don't ask me.
On that note, Mike, you were doing a phenomenal job for the town. Thank you very much for everything that you do.
Oh, no, I don't think this has anything to do with the, the job that our videographer does.
No, no, it's got nothing to do with that.
A general discussion on what we should do.
Absolutely, he does a great job.
Absolutely, he does. Yeah, thank you, Mike.
It's got nothing to do with that.
Yeah.
Feel better like it.
I'll rent you my truck this Saturday.
Now, with that, uh, any, any, any other general discussions you wish to bring up that's, uh, open discussion time?
Big motion, Joe.
No? Okay, next town board meeting. The next town board meeting is September 27, 2018, and it will be at the John J. Senior High School. I'll say that again. John J. Senior High School, Thursday, September 27, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Okay? Thank you very much.
Are we going to get our building back?
A motion to adjourn for a second. Thank you very much.
Here we go.